Judge of Allegiance. Okay, first thing is to approve the agenda. Does anyone have any changes, additions to the agenda as presented?
I make a motion we approve as, as Brendan.
I'll second.
I got a motion by Dave Brusick to approve the agenda, second by Janet Tuma. There is no other comments. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, the agenda is approved. First thing on agenda, Mike, do you want to start with this before we open?
Sure.
Public hearing?
In your packet is the draft ordinance that was prepared and is being recommended by the city charter commission to the council. As you recall, on December 21st, city attorney Scott Riggs was in attendance and provided the council with an overview and an explanation of the recommended language, and you had discussion with that time. We anticipated having this here previous meeting, but we didn't get our advertising for the publication on the public hearing done timely, so we renoviced it and have it scheduled for this evening. The requirement under the adoption eventually is that you're required to hold a public hearing, allow for any public comment, and then you can proceed to introduce the ordinance with the potential that you'd considered the adoption at the February 16th meeting.
So this would be the first reading?
This would be the first reading this evening.
Okay. Any other questions for Mike before we open the public hearing? Okay, I guess we'll open the floor up for any public comments on this topic regarding the whole city charter change. It looks like there's no public comment at this time, so I guess I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Dave Brusick. All in favor closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay, public hearing is closed. And I guess, looking for a motion for adoption of the first reading of the change in the ordinance.
So moved.
Motion by Sean Ryan.
Second.
Second by Amy Juric. There's no other comments. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes five zero. We will have the second reading on the 16th, correct Mike?
Correct.
Okay, good. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we are going to get an update from Superintendent Tim Ditberger, who is going to kind of give us an update on the indoor swimming pool and some of the timelines regarding that. Thanks for coming, Tim.
You bet. Thank you Mayor Nicolai and the council members and staff for allowing me the opportunity to share with you the conceptual design and talk a little bit about timeline and things of that nature in regards to the construction of the central education campus with the renovations and additions, most importantly, of course, with the pool. So it's, we're finally getting there and it's the meetings, and I know we got a pre-bid meeting coming up here in a few weeks, and it's, it's exciting. It's, we're finally getting to that point, and there'll be a lot of, a lot of work and a lot of changes in the upcoming months ahead here. So anyway, as you can see, there's an overview of everything here, and I'm going to just move and show you through. We've got, it's interesting going through the archives in the building here, and I have met with the Historical Society, Dennis Tavorak, and the members of their staff, and we're talking about, here's a picture of the 1923 building and the original picture, what it was going to look like before it was built, and we were able to find that, and the architect thought that would be neat to share. But we'll be having a decommissioning of the building before it's, before there's a demolition and stuff like that, and we'll be talking about buying bricks and those types of things coming up here, but it's a pretty neat thing. What's, the scope of the addition renovation, as you can see here, is of the CEC is to accommodate early childhood, district functions and community education. I'll be going over that, and which includes demolition, like I said, the 23 building, renovation of classroom spaces, about 25,000 square feet. We've got deferred maintenance work that needs to be done and a parking lot expansion. How it pertains more directly with the, with the city is that 24,000 square foot pool and locker room addition, which includes eight lane pool, diving well, zero depth community pool, wet classroom, party room, which is near the pool, and a sun deck adjacent to the community pool. Here you can see the site plan. On the north side there is the pool addition, and the dark gray there obviously is the existing CEC, and you can see on the south end there, the staff parking and the parking by the parent drop off for early childhood. And we've got some more pictures coming up here that you'll see. On the north side there, you can see will be a one-way entrance with the proposed stalls there of 83 parking stalls. Here is just the building diagram, and this would be the upper floor, actually where we're at right now. As you can see in the green there, that's the district office space, being right here in the boardroom, which where you have your meetings. The yellow, of course, is early childhood, which we really needed to expand. And the blue is community education. We have space there. We have our transition program, whoops, there, and we've got two secured entries for early childhood and the main reception area there too, on the main level. On the lower level, in green there is our operations. You can see mechanical in the red. And then, as far as the community education or community center more at, is the orange there. And we have the activities entrance, and I've got a picture coming up that will show you a little bit there, but community center being, we have a community room that you'll see in detail, the gymnasium, and obviously, we'll get to the pool here in a second. Here's a better look at things specifically with, at the pool level. You can see the stretch pool, it's 122 by 61. You can see the spectator seating on the south side there, the locker rooms and adjoining recreational pool and sun deck that faces the west side there, actually the northwest side of the building. On the north side there, you can see the party room there too, and swim team storage and some mechanical rooms. Here's a look from the outside. Again, when you look at the pool addition being on that north side there, the existing building, you can see the entryway for early childhood, the parking lot where there's a demo of the 23 building, and you can see where the main entry addition is. Here's that main entry, which is actually just our courtyard here, how that changes, and you can see what it's going to look like. Here's that early childhood learning there on the southwest side there, where you can see the part of this parking lot was where the 23 building was. So that'll be a parent drop off there. And right now, I think most of you know, it's sort of disaster right now, train the, just with the traffic coming in for community education or early childhood programs and, and other district functions right now, especially on this main level. Here you can see is the activities area that would go into the pool entry, pool area and also the gymnasium, and this is down below there where we have the horseshoe. You can see on the right there, the part of the building there is where the, on the top floor is the early childhood space and operations is on the bottom floor. Here you can see the sun deck and in the pool area there too. Going back, that's the main reception area that I talked about earlier. Here's a community room that I think, I know Janelle Kirsch with Community Services is very excited besides the programming that goes with the pool and the gymnasium, stuff like that, but also really, I think this is going to get a lot of use, having a community room for everybody in our surrounding communities and especially, I think with the, we're really looking at doing more senior activities too. Keep in mind, like I said, when we went, when we talked about presenting the bond referendum, our big thing was that it was going to be available from toddler all the way to senior, the different functions there, and that was a very important factor in making this goal, along with the collaboration between the school district and the city of New Prague. Here's a, you can see an early learning classroom, family education resource area. Here you can see that community pool, and you know, it doesn't have everything in there that might have, that will have in there, but you get sort of the concept where it's a zero-depth entry. You can see on the top side there. You can see that current pool there, it'd be great for exercising for everybody, especially for seniors, and you can see in the far distance there, the swimming pool itself. Here's a better look at the pool, the stretch pool. You can see the stands right there, the, you know, the part where we've got, where it's divided off there, you can see the divers diving there, but then we also have the dive, diving well also. This question probably comes up, and it's nice to see all the pictures, but phase one, you know, is, we're going to get started here, sort of the timeline on things is February 22nd, there'll be a pre-mid, pre-bid meeting right here at the CEC. So general contractors and subcontractors will be here. For example, we're about, the CEC is about a month behind the middle school as far as this process is. Right now, we're advertising for bids right now. We have a pre-bid meeting, like I said. Now, when we had it at the middle school about a month ago, we had about 38 general contractors and subcontractors at the meeting, and people very interested. We ended up having seven general contractors bidding on the middle school project. We separated it. This project is about $4 million more than the CEC, and we think it's, the architects and our owners rep really believe this is going to be also a very attractive construction project. Metcon, as you might have read, or Mike has told you, they received the, they were the low bid for the middle school, and I'm sure they'll probably be going for this, along with other general contractors going for this project. This project is desirable, along with the middle school, because of the length of the project, and, you know, obviously keeping subcontractors employed, and so it's very desirable in that manner. The timeline on this, you can see in the orange is phase one, which is the swimming pool, and that'll be, all work associated with the pool addition will begin, and we have on there, the architect is probably put in worst-case scenario, he's got May of this spring, and it will go until next April, but, so it'll be about an 11-month project. But listening to the contractors, just from the middle school, I'm sure it's going to be the same here, is that they're going to try to get going as soon as possible, as soon as the frost is out and to get going. So I would assume, and being that, we can get going early on the pool addition because it's not anything interior, we don't need to move anyone. So that's real positive, and hope, like it says the timeline there, to be finished by April of 2017. And then obviously, you can see all the other parts of the project, which will include a lot of, I shouldn't say a lot, but some moving around during the project construction. I mean, that's basically it. I'll open it up for any questions right now that you may have. I'm sure I'll be back here again to give you an update, you know, this spring at some point. We'll just monitor that when, when it would be appropriate time to do that. I should mention, that pre-bid meeting, the purpose of that is just for, to get the contractors or the subcontractors in here to see the building, to walk around, gives the chance for the architects and our owners rep, our construction manager, so to speak, to be able to answer questions and talk a little bit, bit more about the scope of the project. The bids will be open on March 8th at 2:00 in this room. So you're invited to come to that, and the middle school bids came in very good for us, and so we're, our architect is very optimistic about the bids coming in for this building as well.
Any questions or comments for Tim?
Was the sun deck as a bid alternate?
Yep.
It is, okay.
Bid alternate.
And did your first offer, the middle school, did that come in 900,000, engineer's estimate?
Yep, yep. Our alternates came in very good there too. We had, oh, I'm going to spot here, we had a part of the building, our air conditioning was, in the new part of the middle school was a alternate, and it came in low. Oh goodness, I can't remember our other alternates right now. I'm drawing a blank right now, but.
To hear though.
Yep, it's, yeah, it's very good to hear. It's pretty, a competitive market right now. We got, and I'm glad we did the referendum when we did, besides, you know, the longer you wait, more expensive it's going to be because of inflation. The other thing is, there are awful lot of referendums that pass this fall that are going to be coming up in the next, this summer or in the fall, where they, they're in their phase of planning like we are right now. And we're one of the few in the southern metro or farther that's got construction going on. So that's another positive.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Tim? Well, Tim, thank you very much for bringing us up to speed of what's going on, and we'll look forward to the next update.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Okay, next on the agenda is some transfer and closure of accounts for capital project funds, and I think, Mike, you were taking this one?
I'm going to try. That Patty was going to be here tonight to handle this, but she's dealing with some family medical issues that have kept her out here this evening. So I'm going to attempt to try to walk you through what's, what's occurring with this, and I may or may not have all the answers, depending upon what your questions are. But as you can see, what Patty's attempting to do is that she's trying to close out, she's working with the auditors in preparation of the audit, which I think begins in about two weeks, is taking some year-end actions that she had to wait till she had a better handle on all of her year-end numbers before she brought forward any amendments or changes that are occurring. So what you can see is happening in this is our CIP 2013, which was established for the reconstruction of Central, First Avenue Northeast, First Street Northwest, School Street, the parking lot, and the alley north of Main Street, that it's been completed, and the balance of that is proposed to be transferred to the debt service account. When we issue bonds for street construction projects, if there's any monies left in the capital construction account, and you might ask, well, why would we end up with any monies? Well, number one, the project doesn't expend everything that we think that it might, that based on quantity differences. If you remember when Chris comes in at the end of the year, when we go to accept a capital project, is he's got the line item basis of asphalt and gravel and all the different things. In a number of cases, the bids are all submitted based on estimated quantities, but the quantities in the end, you don't consume all of the quantities, so you can have monies left over from quantities that aren't expended. Number two is that the way we do our capital financing is that, once we take bids, we put a 5% contingency amount that goes with that to deal with any unanticipated items. So if we don't, again, need to access any of that contingency, then it's available at the end. In some cases, I mean, those are probably the two biggest, or in other cases, if anybody prepays their special assessments, that goes into the debt service account as well. So under, when we do the bonding resolution, is any monies that are left in the capital construction account, when you go to close that out, those have to be transferred to the debt service account that is associated with that until the project is ultimately paid off. So we're closing out the 2013. We're closing out the 2014, which was the reconstruction of Third Street Northwest, Church Avenue Northeast, First Avenue Northeast, School Street Northeast, and the alley east of First Avenue. Again, that's been completed, and the balance is to be transferred into the debt service. So what Patty is able to use when we start doing, taking a look at where we're at in our debt repayment schedules, is she will use some of those excess funds to be able to balance out what we actually have to levy to pay debt service, that that's all it could be used for, is to payment on debt service.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Amy Juric, second by Sean Ryan. Any other comments?
Question, Mike, on page two on the resolution, number three, MVE number 383, closing out to General Projects Fund for $383. Is that right?
No, that, that should be, it should be fund number 383.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Correct. I had that, that was on my list to meet with Patty today to make the final changes in, but she didn't come in, so I didn't meet with her. Same thing, there'd be a number in front of fund 313 as well, on the second, on number four. So you're correct.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, I got a motion and a second. If there's no other comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes five zero. You're going to take the next one, Mike?
Yeah, unless one of the other guys is going to take it. And I don't think they want to, so. They weren't anticipating, so I don't want to shock them by asking them to explain the budget amendments that, again, this is one that Patty would have handled, and she was waiting for some of the year-end numbers that came in that we didn't know until January, where she's proposing to make some slight modifications to the year-end general fund budget revenues and expenditures, and then a couple of capital accounts. So as you take a look at it on the first page, there's a number of items that came in greater than anticipated, and so she is proposing to recommend that we modify and amend the original adopted budget revenues and amend them by adding an additional 228,000 of that total. 150 of that is the bond proceeds that came in for the purchase of the street sweeper, or excuse me, the, yeah, Glenn, that was the street sweeper. We bought this last year. We had $50,000 budgeted in the street department budget, the balance was financed, and so they are allocating the receipt of those bonds into the general fund there, and then we have to offset, and you'll see the expense in the, in the street department for the other 150,000 on the, so it's kind of an in and out, but we have to amend for and include that in the, the general fund budget. Court fines, a number of things from the revenues that come from the state of Minnesota, as well as the SJPA. Those revenues that come in are all transferred to the Scott Joint Prosecution Association. If you remember, this was the first year in the transition of the amendment and that process that we made back in October of 2014, for those that were here when we did that. And so you're seeing an offset on the increases in the revenues that came in for that, as well as in the legal budget, you'll see an amendment there to offset the, the expense. So in the end, we're amending the budget by just under 229,000 from 4.207 to 4.436 on the revenue side. The second page is some departmental budgets within the general fund. Most notable, as you look at it, probably the bigger one is the elections. As you remember, a couple years ago, we budgeted to buy two new tabulators, one with Scott County and one with La Sura County. Scott, or La Sura County chose not to move forward at this time, Scott County did, and so they came in this year in 2015, when we actually had money set aside in a previous year. So we're amending that because we didn't have that included in the budget to do that, but we did have monies set aside. I talked a little bit about the, the attorney, the 5,000 on the fire department is the state aid that they get. We receipt that in and we transfer that over to the fire department, fire relief pension fund, the street sweeper I talked about. In the case of the parks, decreasing by 110, we budgeted that, excuse me, the capital expenditure for the 2015 allocation for the Memorial Park improvement, but we're not actually going to spend it out of the Parks Department budget. We're moving that down to the transfer, and we'll transfer then from the city's accounts over to the capital project fund for the baseball. So we're reducing the, the capital expense in the Parks Department, and we're increasing that by the same amount under a transfer, and then that'll be moved over to that. So in the end, again, similar change from 4.2 million to 4.4 million on the general fund budget. The next piece is, is part of that, is if the council recalls, you made decisions on two major projects this last year after the budget was adopted. One was moving forward on the industrial park project whereby we bought the Kubis property and then undertook the overall development of that project. That was not a budgeted project in 2015, and so we have to amend to cover the revenues and expenditures to undertake that. And so that's just the, the internal accounting work of creating that budget and transferring from EDA to the industrial park land. On the industrial park revenues, you utilize funds from the former MVE special assessment account, the ambulance, the capital projects, and the EDA fund, and a grant from Scott County CDA, and some rental income from farming is kind of, was all on the revenue side to undertake that project. On the expense side, as Patty is showing you there, is the engineering, civil, legal, the professional, the real estate fees, we paid, the licenses, and then the settlement charges. Again, transferring the money out of the MVE special assessments, the ambulance fund, and the capital projects fund 499 over to the industrial park fund to account for that. The second big one was the Memorial Park Baseball Stadium. I think, in fact, both of those decisions were made on the same night, as I recall, back in March of this last year. You undertook decisions on both of those projects, and again, the same thing, is that you were moving forward and waiting for the review and the recommendation that came from the baseball committee. They came in and you made the decision to move forward with the first phase of that improvement project in 2015, but because it was not a budgeted amount, we had to develop the revenue sources that are identified there, as well as then setting up the expenditure on the, the other side of that based on the bid that was received for the construction of the first phase of the baseball improvement project. So collectively, all of those things together, amend the 2015 general fund budget, the EDA and the industrial park, the MVE special assessment fund, the ambulance fund, the capital improvements fund, and the Memorial Park Baseball Stadium. And just so that you know, as you look at the budget, when they, or not the budget, the audit, when it finally comes to you, probably sometime in May, is that will, it will show the original adopted budget as well as the amended. So in there, you'll see the original budget, the amended budget, and then the final, either actual revenues or expenditures, so you can see that it just doesn't modify the original budget, and that you can't tell that we took action to amend that. But you will see that full disclosure. Then the actual resolution does just what I watched you through, but it's the detailed accounting that is provided to the auditors so that they've got a way to backcheck us to make sure that we're performing our accounting correctly. And that's what Patty and the staff put together to, to cover what I just walked you through.
Any questions for Mike?
Well, the newbie has a question. What's MVE special assessment? What does MVE stand for?
It's just monies that were, excess funds that were left over. It used to be the before chart Minnesota.
Yeah, valley engineering.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
So that's the best I can do in Patty's absence.
And you did it in fine fashion, about the similar speed as she would have done it too.
I'm sure.
You didn't even take a couple breaths a couple times. I was kind of worried there. Okay, any other questions? Now, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the changes in the budgets.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Amy Juric, second by Dave Brusick. Any other comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay, pass five zero. Good job, Mike. Jim, I think you better take over the next one. We need to have Mike have a break here.
I can do that.
Okay.
Honorable mayor and council, I have before you two resolutions. For number five, this is a resolution in regards to an agreement with the Department of Public Safety and the Bureau of Criminal Apprehension in regards to the connection of the criminal justice data network. We use these, this computer to access various information from the criminal justice information system, and this agreement must be in place for us to utilize this connection and access this. The joint powers agreement must be signed. This agreement contains language that dictates. This agreement contains language that dictates the responsibilities of the parties involved. It also includes the cost of the access to the network. The annual cost is $480, billed quarterly. There is also a court data services subscriber amendment to the CGDN subscriber agreement to execute. This agreement simply allows us to use e-charging, um, which was developed several years ago. This system allows for electronic criminal complaint review and signing, along with the ability to process a DWI arrest kind of online. We're able to, while we're making the arrests, go onto a computer, tie into the state system, and work through that process, and then immediately when we are done with the process, uh, that information is carried up to the state, so that, um, if there's gonna be a license revocation, they have that information already. And actually, once we, if they test at our office on our, uh, DMT, their machine that we use for alcohol testing, that information goes straight up there and just seals up the process. Our secretaries just make sure that those processes were carried out, um, they're able to send up the report, and then it's completed. Along with those agreements, there's sister agreements or mirrored agreements for the prosecuting attorney also, and, uh, our prosecuting attorney is a Scott County attorney, and, through that office, they do the joint prosecution now. I did speak with Ron Hossevar, he was gracious enough to be the point person for that, and that's why he was named in those documents, um, for that. So my recommendation is to approve the resolution authorizing the execution of the joint powers agreement and subscriber agreement for the city of New Prague, its police department and prosecuting attorney.
And that's the two agreements that are under, uh, number five?
Yes.
Both agreements are in there?
Excuse me, mayor, I wanna clarify.
Well, you have.
There is two of each. There's two joint powers and two court agreements. We didn't copy the second set because it's basically exactly the same.
Oh, okay.
With some minor items relative to the county prosecution, and I didn't think you'd wanna be encumbered with, uh, two parallel, but just so that we point out, is you're approving two joint power agreements and two court data service subscriber amendments as part of the resolution, but we only gave you the first step pertaining to the PD, because it would've been a complete duplication to, to double up what you're seeing in front of you for the most part.
And you've utilized this system since 92, it says?
Yeah, we've been connected with the state, uh, since 1992.
On both of these agreements, or is the other one?
On the, well, on the initial agreement for the CJDN, the, uh, e-charging was only developed probably eight to 10 years ago.
Okay. Any other questions?
The agreements that you see in front of you, we weren't allowed to modify, change, or anything, we have to adopt them as is. There wasn't a lot of choice.
Well, I'm sure. Sure they pretty much have it this way, or my way or the highway? Okay, if there's no other questions, I guess I'll make a motion to approve, I guess, all four, uh, agreements?
I'll second.
Second by Jenna Tuma. Any other questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes five zero. Next one, Jim, I assume you're taking also?
Yeah, the second one is, for the most part, um, the same process, a resolution on a master subscriber agreement for Minnesota court data services and governmental agencies allowing the New Prague Police Department to access court data. This is a new system they developed, um, right now, everybody has access to the court data through MinCourt, um, that is public information. We also have access to that, um, along with a, a sign-in password. The only difference between those is the sign-in password allows you to see open cases. The public just sees closed-out court cases, so they're, they're done, it's all public, and that's why they're allowed access. This is another agreement for the new system that they're developed, that they have developed. Scott County was part of the pilot program with it. This will enable each, uh, user to have their own password, um, but it's an enhanced system that allows you to access some of the court files that are, or papers that are filed with each court case, um, so you could look at, uh, the ones that would affect us the most would be like, uh, order for protection or, uh, Danko order, uh, domestic abuse, no contact order. Those we would utilize in, uh, if we get called to a scene and we believe, or somebody tells us there is an order, we could access it directly and see what the order states, and be able to respond from that point of view then. But this is the same, uh, the resolution authorizing the execution of the master agreement, um, for the police department to access this information.
And I guess this is the same thing, Mike, it's, uh?
This was just one.
Yeah, but this is, they, they.
Couldn't modify, couldn't amend, couldn't do anything, and approve as is.
That's it, okay. Any questions for Jim on, uh, this agreement? Okay, I guess, uh, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, master subscriber agreement with the Minnesota Court Data Services?
Second.
Uh, second by Dave Brusick. Any other questions, comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay. Passes five zero.
Without your approvals on both actions five and six, it would render the police department ineffective that they couldn't do anything, as far as the interaction through the various state agencies and prosecution.
Is this, I guess I should, is this like on a calendar basis, or is it? Or is it?
This is gonna be a five-year agreement, and then they have to be re-upped every five years.
Okay. Thank you. Ken, I assume you're taking English?
I will. Uh, as the council, Jim's gonna help me, though.
What, speaking English, or?
Um, back on December 7th, we had, uh, resident Mr. Tim Price, uh, in attendance to relay some concerns about vehicle speeds on English Avenue North, uh, Northwest, noted at that time that he had safety concerns about children that live in the area and the, uh, vehicle traffic speeds. After that discussion, staff, uh, offered up that we would talk to our city engineer, specifically use our traffic engineer, uh, Mr. Mike Codla, that works with Chris Cavett with SEH. He helped write our transportation plan ad, has a lot of background information on not just our traffic, uh, system in New Prague, but just about generally traffic flow and function and, and safety. And we had him take a look at the two traffic studies we did. We had the one that was done in July, and the other one that was done in December after Mr. Price was here. Basically, had, uh, the one done in July was up on the, uh, intersection of Speech Street and English, and then, uh, we moved it down to the Music Street intersection with English for the second count, which is closer to, to Mr. Price's house, uh, for that December count. Again, and you can kinda read through, uh, Mr. Codla's memo here, but, um, in a nutshell, he took a look at those two studies, he also looked at crash data, um, site distances, and other pertinent information, uh, that he could, uh, to review all the information about that, particularly the intersection of English and Music. He found no operational safety issues to warrant any, uh, stop sign to be installed, or any other immediate traffic control change at or near, uh, the English Avenue and Music Street intersection. Basically, as staff had said at that meeting back in, in December, uh, that very much does agree with, uh, our findings. We did not share with Mr. Codla our initial review memo, it was an independent analysis. We didn't, you know, tell him any preconceived notions about how we felt about it, uh, but he did arrive at that same conclusion. That said, and I could have, uh, Jim comment on this more, um, uh, we would offer to provide enhanced enforcement activities on English Avenue Northwest. Feel that there's probably a few spoiling the, uh, appearance of the speeding problem up there. Maybe I'll just have Jim comment on that more, about how we might approach the traffic enforcement activities up there.
Yes, at our staff meeting, we discussed this, and, um, I just indicated that I would speak with, uh, department personnel, and we'll try and give that a little more, um, extra patrol in that area, just for traffic enforcement, um, and take, uh, enforcement actions when necessary. Just being visible, it's gonna slow down traffic, um, and also, any enforcement action, usually that word spreads rapidly also. But just to echo Ken, um, the speeds up there are not out of tolerance at all, so I don't know how much enforcement action will also be taken. But if somebody is, uh, driving inappropriately, we can definitely respond to that.
Has Mr. Price been, uh, contacted at all in regards to the study, or?
I emailed him just recently and just let him know that, uh, once, um, we reviewed the study and brought it to the council, that I would let him know where we're at. I did indicate that we have been, uh, up there in the area, um, with some extra patrol. He, his response was just, "Thanks, thanks for getting back to me," or something, and that was it, at this time. But I will follow up once again.
Is there, now, English, how, how many blocks does that go, Ken? In the diagram, I only see it to Speech, but does it go?
It would go another block past Speech Street, up to where Art Street kinda curves back over to, uh, English, so it's a dead end at that point.
Okay.
There's a couple of houses north of that last intersection, but it doesn't go any further than that.
Yeah.
And I know, uh, Mr. Price did bring up the concern that there's a number of vacant lots north of the Speech Street intersection, so we'll, we'll continue to monitor that, and obviously we'll have more traffic, um, as more houses are built. So it's kind of a fluid situation, obviously, uh, but we'll keep an eye on it. As I said, this is a traffic, uh, or a street where we've done traffic studies over the years, and as with other areas, we'll, we'll update that information and, uh, make sure that, you know, we won't just forget about it, um, we'll continue to watch it.
Okay. Any questions for Ken or Jim in regarding? Okay, well, thank you very much. And Jim, after you talked to Mr. Price, if he has any other issues, he's more than welcome to come to the council.
Okay.
Thank you. Next, Mike, are you gonna take this invitation?
Sure. That, uh, what you have in your packet is a special invite from the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities to participate in their Legislative Action Day, which is scheduled to be held on March 16th this year. As I indicated in my memo, uh, the League of Minnesota Cities is not gonna be holding their annual legislative conference as they typically have, uh, in light of the, uh, construction and the, uh, disruptions that are counted around the legislature. However, the Coalition is still planning to do theirs, and, uh, uh, they hold, uh, a meeting of the member cities, uh, with the legislators to discuss issues that are important to Greater Minnesota, uh, cities. I included their, uh, agenda for the day, their, their materials. I also wanted a little further, just to provide, for those of you that don't know anything about the Coalition, was just some general information as to, you know, what is the core focus or purpose of the Coalition? What are their major concentrations of programs that they work with, with their outstate cities? It said there's an attached list of 85, it, uh, should be about 88 is what it is truly now, uh, that they've got a very narrowly focused, uh, grouping of, uh, activities that are their primary purpose and concentration in the legislative functions. So, number one, they're inviting you to attend, uh, their legislative day, and then the second part of it was to, uh, one of their focuses, as you can see, deals with local government aid, uh, that's, uh, supposed to be a topic here in the 2016 legislative session, and they are asking, uh, coalitions, member cities, as well as non-members alike, to consider passing, uh, resolution in favor of their, uh, request to the legislature, which is to, uh, increase LGA in 2016 by 45.5 million dollars. So you, you've got the invite and the clarification of what's supposed to go on on the Legislative Action Day in 2016. I think part of the reason we received the materials, if you probably noticed, is that the, uh, president of the Coalition this year is the mayor from the city of La Sure, just down the road, uh, who was in attendance at our, uh, officials meeting, the La Sure County officials meeting this past Wednesday, uh, so you can see what's going on there. And then I attached a, a copy of the resolution, uh, with, uh, the slight modification that the, they left open, as to if there was any increase, how might the city of New Prague use it? And I just indicated, at least in just for your consideration, whether you choose to adopt it or not, is that, uh, we started funding in this year's budget, the 2016 budget, to pay for half of an investigator, so if additional funding, uh, might become possible in 2017, uh, that would certainly help the city, as we try to take a look at funding the second half of that position, uh, where you'll be considering the full position in 2017. So, uh, that was, uh, the only modification that I made to the resolution. Tried to provide a little bit of history to show you in the last 10 years, what is LGA, what's the picture been, and what does it look like, and so that's included in your packet. So, your action tonight is whether you choose to, uh, wanna participate in their Legislative Action Day on the 16th, and/or consider adopting the resolution, or neither of, uh, the two as well, so, your choice.
Anyone interested in, first, I guess, the first thing is, is anyone interested in going to, uh, legislation, Legislative Action Day, uh, on March 16th?
Yes, I'd be interested.
I'd probably go too.
I would go too, I have one meeting.
You're gonna go, Mike? Yes. Okay. I just, just to disclose, I was a board member from my past community on the Coalition, was very active in the Coalition, uh, through the city of Marshall, and so, that's why I tried to give you a little bit of background, you could see between LGA annexation, economic development, labor, the environment, transportation. It's a very narrowly focused, uh, uh, core group of issues that they deal with. We sit on that, uh, urban rural fringe, and so I think you'll find it, uh, should be quite a good educational day, and so even though we're not participating with the, uh, the townships, the schools, the cities, uh, uh, like we have historically in past years, I think you'll find this, uh, just as good a day to, to go do this. So Amy, Jenna, Sean are all interested?
I'm kinda interested too.
I'll check my calendar.
Yeah.
Mike, it says in the letter that, uh, the goal was to bring LGA back from, uh, 2002. What was the New Pragues at that time, do you remember?
Was it on here?
I have that, but I basically have cut off the, the information here, uh, just to give you about 10, uh, 10 years' worth of information, I just, uh, uh, but no, I can't answer exactly. I, I have that information, and it's part of this information, I just didn't go back far enough in, uh, in running the graph to do that, but I can get you that answer very quickly. So that you can see what that looked like.
So it says that this form has to be sit, uh, turned in by March 2nd, so what, maybe within a week or so, everyone checked their calendars, and let Mike know who's interested, and, and we can go forward, is that, that should be ample time, right, Mike? Just to confirm if, if you definitely wanna go.
Mike, are some of those cities that are listed, is their LGA much lower relative to ours as far as population goes?
Actually, a lot of those cities that you see on the enclosed list, uh, receive significantly more in LGA than what we do. If you remember the budget packet, and you maybe don't recall, as I put in what the LG was for cities between 5,000 and 10,000 population, and so that would catch a number of them in here, but not all of them, but, uh, I can tell you is that, I don't know if it was a staff person or somebody asked me, is that a number of those regional center cities that, uh, LGA, uh, can amount to 30, 35, 40% of their general fund budget. So it's extremely a major issue, which is why they have it as one of their highest priority areas to continually, year in and year out, uh, take a look at advocating and, uh, addressing that, and, uh, I think there was just something here recently in the newspaper that, uh, the mayor of La Sure, as the president of the Coalition, is, uh, in the lead, and I think he's even been on the news in some of the discussions on this, but, uh, I know it will be a very popular, uh, issue for debate this coming year. The larger cities, uh, Rochester, Minneapolis, uh, uh, some of those, uh, St. Cloud, a number of those cities, uh, receive LGA as well, and it's a, it's a critical component, and that's why, when you take a look at it, and we talk about how long is it gonna be around, uh, I'm very skeptical that that would go away overnight, and I think, uh, we've talked about that we have sufficient reserve fund balance if something happened, and in most cases, it wouldn't go away in one year, and we'd have time to handle any contingency. any contingency planning or swings to begin to deal with it. But as you can see, even in our budget, it's about 19% of the general fund budget. So it is a critical piece, and I can assure you, some of the larger cities, that whether it be Marshall, or Red Wing, or Oatown, or some of those, it plays an even larger role in their budgets than what it does for us.
Okay, so everyone will get back to Mike within the next week or so, in regarding if you are in for sure, and then we can get that going. In regards to the resolution, I guess, in my opinion, I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution, showing that we are backing the LGA recommendation.
A second.
I got a second by Amy Jerk. Any other comments? None, I guess, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, very good. Sure Bob will appreciate that, next time we see him. Maybe we'll get a cocktail out of him for...
Tell him he's got to buy you a drink.
Yes. Next is the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or issues on any items in the consent agenda? If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Motion by Dave Brusick, second by Sean Ryan. If there's no other questions or comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, consent agenda is approved. Miscellaneous. Patrick, we're going to start with you, anything? Okay. Jim?
Nothing.
Nothing? Glenn, you've been awful quiet today.
It's my best trait. I have nothing.
Okay. Ken?
He is prepared, though, for tomorrow.
Oh, for the snowfall? You're going to sleep in the trucks? I like it, I like it. I like it. Ken?
Real quick update, the chicken matter, I'll come to you at the Tuesday, February 16th meeting, but planning commission, as expected, did not recommend a prohibition on backyard chickens, but I'll have the full write-up and everything for you for consideration at the next meeting.
Okay. Can you also kind of include, I mean, do, and maybe you know the answer already, do, are they required to inoculate these chickens? You know, like dogs have to have certain shots and...
You can have rules that could stipulate...
I don't know what other...
Types of things, yeah. Some cities don't go in that great a detail, some cities do, if you're going to allow them. So it's wide open.
I mean, it's, it's a, obviously, it's a hot topic, it was on the, in the Tribune, it was on care 11.
11 this weekend.
You know, it just seems like it's, it's a, it's almost like the breweries, you know, you notice now, the next article that was just this last week, that they might be over saturated now, all these microbreweries and everything, so, you know, it's whatever's on it in people's minds, but...
So were there a lot of people there talking in favor?
Five people in attendance, and they all spoke in favor of keeping them. So not a real big turnout. There was mention of a online petition, and I tried to ascertain whether they were actual city residents, and you get a lot of things online. I don't know how much stock you can put into that, but that may appear before you at the next meeting. I don't know if I'll get it, I asked for it for the packet, but we'll, we'll see.
Well, yeah, I opened it up, the one that was sent to us, and...
Hard to tell where the people actually live.
Right, and, you know, and some people, you know, I have chickens in Rosemont. I'm thinking, oh, you know, well, good, you're in Rosemont, you know, but, I mean, I think you're right. I think there is probably some information on that, but, okay.
So I have.
Sounds good. Mary Jo? Mike?
Aye.
John?
Nope.
David?
Nope.
I just want to make a quick comment that David's article is very good in the utility bill, and Amy is up next, so we're going to see if she can one-up him, you know, so...
I'm also happy. She will.
Jenna, anything?
I'm good.
Amy?
I just had a question. I had a resident ask me, when are the agendas posted on the website? Is it before the meeting, after the meeting?
Our agendas are posted on Friday afternoon.
Before, on Friday, before, okay. All right, so when we get them, they're, they're posted.
Before the packets leave the office on Friday afternoon, depending on the timing. It could be early, mid-afternoon, as soon as we're done with the agendas.
Okay, I just wasn't sure how to answer that, so, thank you.
Anything else?
No.
I do not have anything else, so I guess I'll make a motion to go in closed session.
No, we're, it's a little different tonight based on the way Scott had to put this one together, is we're going to have you adjourn the regular meeting.
Okay.
And then we will reconvene in a special...
That thing Scott, puts, changes things all the time on me. I thought I finally had it laid out, and then...
So you can adjourn the regular meeting.
Okay, I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Dave Brusick, all in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay.
So now you know how I felt.
Yeah, now you know, see...